So I am going to call the order, the school committee meeting of May 28th, 2020. It's a remote meeting due to the COVID closure. It is 9:02 a.m. and we have all of our, all of our committee members with. We did receive a public comment this morning from the Winchester Special Ed. That is the group that helps support our students with special needs in the district. And advisory to the school committee. They did share with us some of the successes that students with special needs are finding with their remote learning, particularly around teacher-recorded lessons, the team approach to curriculum, teachers, aides, and specialists that are on call or have office access, and the robust planning that our teachers are doing around weekly and daily must-do work, homework planners, and executive functioning guides to help students and parents plan. They did want to share with the committee some of their concerns about special educators' service delivery, the method of whether they are actually delivering direct services versus just checking in with students. Around E S Y. Some questions they continue to have about remote learning plans and the part that they play in delivering services and being able to help parents know if students are making progress on IEPs. And also some concerns around particularly older students being asked to reach out for help instead of help being proactively offered to them. They also just shared some concerns moving forward about the community of students that normally receives one-to-one services on a daily basis and their understanding about that being particularly challenging to deliver in this environment. You all received copies of the memo. It's about a four-page memo if you want more information about that. I did want to just, I know we don't normally comment on public comments, but since Pam Gerard is here with us this morning, I just wanted to give her an opportunity if she had any response to that memo or if not, we can just move along with the meeting.
No, I have no response, Michelle. Thank you. I think that some of the concerns that, that people have shared are concerns that Central Office fully, fully understands.
Great. Thank you very much. And so we will continue on with the meeting then. And the first action item we have is a discussion and vote on the FY21 budget. If we are interested in any budget reductions, discussing the impact of town meeting coming up and just reviewing where we are in terms of our latest meeting with the Finance Committee. Brian, Dr. Evans and I did attend the last Finance Committee meeting. And in that meeting, Lisa Wong, the Town Manager, did make an offer to ThinkCom of a 3.29 budget that would be partway in between what we were asking for and what ThinkCom was recommending and would preserve many of the things that we're looking for within the budget. Obviously, not all of the things that we think that we need and all of our deferred needs, but would preserve many of them. And ThinkCom was unwilling to see a path forward that they felt that out even at 3.29 that our budget would be financially feasible. Right now, I'm in the process of preparing our town meeting presentation and I am preparing it around a 3.74 budget. I'd like Dr. Evans and Ellen, as necessary, to also talk with us today about the budget and about moving forward toward town meeting.
Can Michelle make a point of order?
Sure.
So there's a lot of work, I can tell, in the packet on this item and also the one that immediately follows it, which is the discussion of COVID-19 impact on FY21. So certainly I defer to you and the rest of the committee. But for me personally, I think I'd feel more comfortable if we could start on Item B, which is the, some thinking that the administration has now about budget impact next year. To sort of put me in a frame to think about the actual budget for next year, if that's something you're willing to consider.
I think that's totally appropriate.
Is that okay, Judy?
Sure, absolutely. So let's talk about fall 2020, which will be upon us before we know it, and preparations for that. And as you probably have read in every newspaper and on many Twitter feeds and some of the articles we've shared with you, superintendents, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the governor, the legislature, everyone is very concerned about reopening schools safely and making sure that we have made provisions for appropriate social distancing and health checks and that we can, in fact, reassure our parents that their students will be healthy and well if they return to school. As you probably have heard, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a large task force working on this. They are not likely to make their full recommendations for several weeks, which makes planning for the fall, particularly around budget, very challenging. The, there will be some recommendations that will come out where there is an expectation that districts prepare for three eventualities. One is a full, normal opening with appropriate social distancing in place. One is some kind of a staggered opening where only half of the students are there at any one time and where there are pretty significant restrictions on student movement and in order to maintain health. With some expectation that there'll be some support for education on the times when students are not in school. A full distance learning opening where no students or teachers are on campus that could extend for a significant period of time. Or some combination of an in-person opening with social distancing with half the students there with fairly frequent periods of shutdown for individual schools or full district depending on contact tracing rates of infection and advice from the state. So as you might imagine, we are all really scrambling to be sure that we are adequately provisioned for a number of different scenarios that we're likely to face in the fall. And there are costs associated with these, but some of them are very difficult to quantify because some of them are personnel-related. And one of the things that the commissioner said on a phone conversation yesterday with superintendents was that he recognizes that schools will want to have significant lead time to acquire personal protective equipment and supplies. Those will be in short supply and supply and demand. I was an economics and English major when I went to college and I recognize that if everybody wants to buy 100,000 masks, that the prices of masks are going to go up and to an unaffordable level. So what the commissioner recommended is that we purchase a three-month supply of the equipment and devices that we think we need, that the state will ensure that the state bid list, and something's going to come out on Monday on this, will have suggested prices that are more affordable and, but that the state is not going to coordinate this, that individual districts are going to do this in a dog-eat-dog kind of fashion, which is extremely disappointing. And for those of you who have family members who work at hospitals, you have seen how well that has worked or not worked. And so, very disappointing.
I have a quick clarification on the PPE. Judy, is the recommendation, we talk about a three-year supply, is that for our teachers and staff? Or is that, does that also include our students? Are they expected to come with face coverings or are we providing?
Yeah, there were a lot of questions about that. So as you know, the guidance from the Public Health folks changes, you know, weekly, daily, monthly. At this point, the plan that I have presented to you in very much an outline form talks about students and faculty members being masked, providing their own masks, but we will have to have masks available for students who forget them or lose them or they become, you know, unable to wear them for some reason. So, you know, Ellen and I are working with some other districts to see if we can collaboratively purchase with a high-quality PPE at a lower price. Because you can imagine with 5,000 students and several hundred faculty members, masks are now running close to a dollar per. You could see how we could quickly run into hundreds of thousands of dollars in expenses. And so if we were to provide all the masks, several masks for every person every day. I think that most people will have their, bring their own masks and we will have just backup masks, but I still think there'll be a significant cost to that. So the other, so PPE is one area that we are looking at. So there's a consultant who's been hired by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to make recommendations related to what the appropriate PPE should be and what the appropriate equipment should be. They're recommending, for example, thermal scanners that are about $3,000 to $5,000 each, where I'm sure you've seen them, they're widely used in China and some other countries where you would walk by a scanner and then a display, digital display would show the temperatures as opposed to a handheld scanner that requires more time and puts more students in line longer. And so what direction we go, whether even taking temperatures is going to be suggested by September is a whole other matter. So there's lots of sort of unknowns about to what extent do we order things now that may or not, may, may or may not be used. And if there's a significant chance that we're not going to open at all in the fall, that gives us a little more time if we can continue with a socially-distanced or distance-learning scenario. So the categories of potential exposure for budget purposes for FY21 include staffing, PPE and supplies, as I said, facilities issues, which I'll go into in a little more detail. And then sort of lost revenue and kind of sunk costs for athletics, food service, and in other programs that we will either maintain or not. And in a very uncertain, in a very uncertain way because we don't know whether some things will be on and off in terms of the events like athletics. Right now, the MIA is planning to run a fall sports season, even if it's, it has restrictions. So food service is another area of potential exposure. We'll talk about that a little bit in terms of impact on revenue for the, for Witsen's. We'll have a one-year extension of that contract. The food service may look very different and they certainly will not sell as many meals if we have to socially distance. And then distance-learning expenses like technology, software, PD and training. So the biggest kind of unknown area, and we are surveying staff now on this, is how many teachers or support staff members are in at-risk categories and won't be able to return to school? And will we need to hire substitutes for them? Either leave-of-absence replacements or short-term substitutes or using our daily substitutes, many of whom would fall in the at-risk category because of age. So staffing issues are a concern. The other concern is if we have staff members who have a positive test result or have a family member they need to care for and need to step out for a period of time, that's kind of unknown. So there are some staffing exposures that are concerning. And the cost range that I've put, that Michelle is displaying now, is for a few additional daily substitutes and not for, say, 20% of the staff who may be out of commission at any one point in time. There, there would become a level where we could not continue education if enough people became ill or were tapped out. And so there just won't be enough people available to substitute. And so, you know, that is a concern, not knowing how deep the virus will make its way into our community and how many staff members and/or students will be affected. Question on staffing. Go ahead, Karen.
You had mentioned that 20, you could envision up to 20% being out. And I guess, what do you envision, what, do you have an idea of what the cost at that point would be? Or are you?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, obviously, the, the cost would depend on a number of factors, including whether those are paid leaves or unpaid leaves, whether staff members are out to care for family members or are able to work. If we have a certain percentage of our students who are on distance learning for any number of reasons, if it's part of our structure and folks need to tap out because they are at risk for their health, then there's no additional cost for them because they are providing a service and they continue to get paid. If people become ill and use a lot of their sick time, that we need to pay for a substitute if we can't use someone who's already on payroll. My concern is not so much that we will have to hire 100 people at any one time to be substitutes as there aren't 100 people out there to hire. And so getting a handle on how many people are not going to be able to physically return, even if we are fully open in the fall, is really important. And trying to make provisions for educating students remotely by people who are able to remotely but not physically in our schools is going to be a complicated task. So there could be additional costs for substitutes or replacement teachers or one-to-one aides for special education, things that are mandated. And it's really unknown, it's wide open. So this leads me to advocate strongly for adding all the additional positions that we had originally proposed because in any scenario, even if we're fortunate and we don't have a lot of staff absences, we're going to need every hand on deck for the, for the provisioning of social distancing, particularly if we, if we need additional people to plan and deliver online distance learning to students who aren't able to be with us. And so adding the additional staff members that we requested seems to be prudent to me. I don't think this is the time to pull back and not add staff members. So moving on.
Dr. Evans?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you and, do you and the other superintendents, are you concerned at all about the way there is going to be a PPE shortage? Are you concerned about a substitute shortage? Because it may be a time in which teachers who are substituting choose not to substitute and that that may be, it may follow a similar theory that there will be increased demand and less available?
Right. I think we're all concerned about that. And there's more flexibility with distance learning to have someone other than the primary teacher manage that if we have large numbers of students who, for whatever reason, aren't attending. And we are about to launch surveys to kind of gather some information about that and that will help us. But the problem is until the state comes up with guidelines for what the fall will look like, asking parents whether they're comfortable sending their children or asking staff members whether they're comfortable returning is a hard question because without information, how can they make that decision? What will it look like? If I were a parent, I would want to know, how are you going to protect my child? What are the safeguards you have in place? How many students will be in his class? What will he do at lunch? Where are the handwashing facilities, et cetera? There are lots and lots of, you know, rational, reasonable questions that at this point, we're unable to answer because the state plan really places limitations on our ability to self-determine. So if we decided, if the school committee decided today that there were no circumstances under which it's safe for us to return and wanted us to go to a full-distance learning model for the fall, we're not legally able to do that because the state has not permitted that. The state still requires in-person education for 990 hours for high school students for 180 days a year. And until they change that, we would be in violation. And so I fully expect that they'll give us some flexibility to meet the needs of our individual community, but we can't.
Thank you.
Sure. So in terms of other supplies, so availability of supplies. So Ellen and I are ordering from FY20 funding and will order from CARES grant funding that starts in July 1st, some PPE. There's $95,000 in CARES funding that we'll use for either technology or other expenses. And some of the supplies include hand sanitizer supplies, some gowns, masks, gloves, some of those, most of those for adult use, et cetera. Also, physical separation devices like Plexiglas separators for desks, sort of ropes or guidelines to, to keep lines orderly, tape to indicate social distancing, stopping stations, signage, et cetera. And so lots of small ticket, but when you add it all up, it's real money. In terms of facilities enhancements, we may need to do some physical separation. We may need to move some desks and tables around. We may need to install some Plexiglas shields in places in front of, say, the reception areas in some of our offices, et cetera. We will work with the DPWU to do that, some of those things. Again, I'm getting hundreds of emails a day from companies who are trying to take advantage of this and offering us packages where we can pre-purchase some of these shields. I think we're trying to proceed cautiously, but can get pretty expensive pretty quickly. And not, and not clear whether some of those are really as protective as you might think. Some of them are worse for psychological protection. And so we really want to take our cues from public health and the state in terms of what's absolutely recommended and then what does our communities feel is the most protective but still student-friendly approach to use for, for distance, distancing, social distancing. I touched briefly on athletics. The impact athletics is heavily funded through fees. If there are no fees coming in, there are still some fixed costs. We have some personnel costs, a athletic director. We still have fees that we pay to the MIA, et cetera. So there are some costs that we will incur. Even if we take some of the personnel and reallocate them, which we would likely do if the season were canceled, there are still costs associated that would normally be borne by fee. So that's a concern. Transportation is another big area of concern. There are some scenarios under which we would be required to run many more buses. If we limited the number of students on a bus very significantly, it means more bus runs or more buses. There simply aren't enough buses in the state to do double runs in every community. And we can talk further about how much busing we really want to do, what kind of surveying we want to do to parents to see if they feel comfortable having their children ride the bus. Just want to remind the committee, the state law around busing says you don't have to bus grade seven through 12 at all. And you don't have to bus K to six unless the child lives more than two miles from school. In any given year, there may be zero to three children who are in that category. And so our busing service is provided as a convenience and because we believe that it's better for our town and our environment to have children on buses rather than in individual cars. But transportation could be significantly affected by COVID. Food service, we talked about. I think we're planning for a continuation of food service, but more like bag lunches that get delivered to classrooms at this point. And Ellen will work with Witsen's to see certainly what changes to food service will be required in the fall. And any recommendation we make is not necessarily for the full year, but only for the duration of the public health emergency. So food service is almost, almost exclusively funded by school lunches. It's not something that the district provides much financial support for. So it really, Ellen would have to speak to what would be the impact if Witsen suddenly had a 75% reduction in revenue, which they have had. Certainly, they've had 100% reduction in revenue for the closure periods and how long that's sustainable. And finally, distance learning. We have pre-pre-purchased replacement Chromebooks for those we distributed to families. We need to have Chromebooks in good working order for our students to use for state testing. And many of those we would normally use for state testing. We've distributed to students and families. Jen, Ellen, Emma has done a heroic job with that, giving them out every week, dropping them off where people didn't have transportation. We think that our students and families are well provisioned with Chromebooks and/or hotspots for internet access, but there are costs associated with distance learning. But a lot of the sort of replacement device impact, both for teachers and students, we've taken care of through reallocation of the technology director's salary line into more pre-purchasing of devices for the fall. There may be some additional costs in terms of software. We've been really careful to say we're trying out a variety of different software packages for distance learning. Most of those have had no cost to us. Some might have a cost for continuation. Jen is working to assess that with the team. But we expect to be able to absorb that within our regular budget. So the biggest unknown cost then, in summary, are staffing. If we are to have teachers who are unable or staff members who aren't able to work and need a replacement. PPE and supplies, where the costs are very high now, but we're trying to do some group buying. Facilities enhancements, we'll work with DPWU on that. And then impact on revolving on the athletic budget, transportation, food service, and then distance learning. Those are the categories that we've identified as in need of a look. And the question, I suppose, that the reason Chris brought this up is how can we make a decision about our 3.77 ASK original school committee voted budget in light of what could be several hundred thousand dollars in increased costs with COVID? Two things, the CARES grant will offset some of these costs by $95,000. MEMA reimburses allowable costs under the emergency at 75%. And so there are some costs associated with the pandemic that would be reimbursed by the federal government or the CARES grant. Some will certainly be borne by the local budget. So that's kind of the summary. Ellen, what have I forgotten?
You've forgotten nothing. This was very, you incorporated everything that, from our conversations.
So questions, concerns, something we haven't thought of. Karen?
I just had a question. I was just reading an article in the New York Times last night about the CARES, the CARES grant.
Yes.
And that it's been recommended from high up by city bus to split the CARES grant between private and public schools. And I guess that's all very up in the air. But do you foresee that as being an impact on us potentially?
So, yeah, so, so the question is, the, any federal grant that we get, we have to do a proportionate share to private schools that may be within our borders or service our students. So Jen faces this all the time with the other federal grants that she administers, Title I. And Pam does the same with some of the special education grants. So there are really two kinds of sharing. One is schools that service our students who might be entitled to some of the money and then schools that are within our boundaries. So where I live in Shrewsbury, there are several very large private schools. There's St. John's, there's a Hamra, there's a Prokial School. There are some early childhood schools. And when I wrote grants when I was assistant superintendent, large amounts of money went to those schools as they were entitled to have because they were within the boundaries of the town. For us, we don't have a lot of private schools within the boundaries of our town. So sharing, those sharing costs are less for us. But Jen or Ellen, you want to speak to, so the $95,000 that's coming in with CARES, any sense for what we would need to share with private schools, if any?
So in terms of what we, um what our proportionate share is with um with the IDEA special ed grant, um it's it's a few thousand dollars um that we hold back um annually. Um so I'm not concerned that the proportionate share is going to take a significant amount out of um the allocation that we get from the CARES grant.
Jen, you have anything you want to jump in on?
Yeah, um on our other grants are Title I, two, three, and four. Um we uh typically, they're around um either direct services like Title I uh for students um for reading services and, you know, that doesn't pertain to this one. Title three um is around EL services, which also does not pertain to this one. And Title two, well, Title four, we roll into Title two, which is around professional development. And we invite the um other schools in our town to participate in our professional development. And they recoup more than they would be allocated in the grant. And it also allows us to uh do more professional development. So that shouldn't be an issue either.
So I think the answer, Karen, is that we're fairly fortunate because we don't have a large number of private schools within our geographical boundaries. Um and that our exposure is pretty limited. So most of the funding should be able to be spent for for district COVID expenses.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I guess I wasn't really sure how far our boundary extended. That we were something regional for it. Thank you.
Sure. Other questions around the COVID, Brian has his hand up.
Thank you. Um I actually have two questions, and the first is sort of somewhat general. Um uh like everyone else, I'm getting calls and questions of um how will we make the decision as far as what the fall looks like? And so this is sort of a general um question to you. How much um autonomy do you see us having? And how much uh are we going to be following the the directives and guidance of the state as far as what we do in the fall? Do you anticipate um so that when somebody says to me, well, we really should be opening full-time every day, and someone else said we should be doing distance learning? My response has been, I think we need to follow the guidance of the state. But but do you anticipate that there's guidance in the state is going to be um somewhat prescriptive? Or do you think it's going to be more open-ended? And just I'm asking your guess, I know that's um big question.
So all of.
And I'm gonna, I'll let Judy answer this one, but um I don't want to get too far down this path right now because this is a budget discussion and not discussion.
So the reason, the reason I'm asking that, so I'll follow up with the reason I'm asking is because I I'm thinking specifically of busing. Um and busing, the guidance around, so I could make it more specific. The guidance around busing is going to come along, and that might be that we have to have only a third as many kids on a bus. And so if we have only a third as many kids on the bus, the bus rates are going to have to go up. So m- my question, I I get, I don't need to be that, we can be more specific. I I'm curious about guidance on busing is really where I am because I I see potentially our busing being untenable moving forward with um at the rates we charge and at the uh expense to our town um with what I potentially see as the guidance. And I was curious if that's going to be hard and fast guidance, or it's going to be something you think is more 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 fle- flexible?
Right. So um first of all, we have to follow state and federal law. And if the law says we're not required to bus, then any rules they make about busing are open to school committee decision, whether or not you allow busing at all. What we can't do is put sixty-eight students on a bus if the state says that socially-distanced buses only can have half the number of students or a third the number of students. So that some of that's going to be a school committee decision. The, I believe that the state is going to be as flexible as they can be um and not require us to open if we're not comfortable opening. Um if uh if we can meet the criteria that they set for distance learning um as an approved distance learning uh organization or um that our social distancing plan makes sense to them, uh we could open more broadly than some places in the state. I think the commissioner is trying to walk that fine line between uh what the law requires and what makes common sense and responding in a flexible way to changing circumstance. So um I don't think that the state is going to compel us, even though a lot of superintendents would like this, to follow any specific model in terms of social distancing. Um and so whether we do split sessions morning and afternoon, whether we do every other day, whether we do uh every other week, um I think there'll be some flexibility with that as long as we're able to support student learning um remotely in the times when they're not in school. So how is this decision going to be made? Jen is uh chairing a a working group, um and I'm involved in sitting on that uh working group where we're considering any number of options for the fall. And then we'll present it to school committee and community for more feedback uh as soon as we get guidelines from the state. Uh and we have a more detailed plan that makes sense for people to respond to. And then we'll see how all the pieces fit together. Getting back to Michelle, refocusing us on budget. So the um decision that we have to make uh at town meeting whenever that happens is um how much we're going to allocate from the town to support the school department budget in a time of uncertainty. And in some ways, um we've got to be prepared to be very flexible and responsive to the needs of our students. And that and that is true on the town side as well. Um there's a lot of uncertainty on the town side in relation to the pandemic. So we're trying to plan a budget that was developed for normal times um and include uh as much in it as possible so that we can be flexible. And so are there any other questions about sort of COVID expenses before we jump in? Michelle, I'll, I'm going to turn it back to you so you can uh call.
I had a quick question about um and I did two items that aren't on the li- or an item that's not on the list, and it's special services. So do we not envision any additional costs for EL or special ed because of COVID and the related um potential regression around that?
No, um the, there will certainly be additional expenses in those areas. But um since the whole world and the whole country is in the same boat in terms of uh students not receiving their usual education, I think it's not likely that we'll be held to the standard that we would for students with disabilities or English learners if we were open. So this is a an unusual time, and there may be some, certainly will be some students who will regress. But that's what we do as teachers. We take our students where they are, when they're back with us, and we move them as far forward as we can, as quickly as is appropriate. Um and certainly, some students will need longer to achieve their goals. Um and there may be some parents who decide to place their students in special education schools as sort of a uh without going through the team process because they're concerned about their children's progress. But um all those schools are closed too. So I think we're all in the same boat. Um and what I've said to Pam and other people who keep bringing up, you know, compensatory services or other costs or legal classes, we'll work and do the very best that we can with the resources that we have under a global pandemic. And if it has to make its way through the legal system, we'll do that thoughtfully and slowly. And um we'll address it as it comes. And so um there's a reasonableness factor here that I think um it would be easy to get very concerned about large numbers of students falling behind. But everybody's falling behind because we're closed to regular learning and social interaction. And so it is to be expected that um it will take some catch-up time for for us to adjust to this. It is um, but it is not even just a US problem, it's an international problem. And so um we all have to sort of take a deep breath and work together on this so that um we don't overreact or underreact to people who are concerned about their children's learning. Pam, I don't know if you want to jump in and add anything to that?
I'd be happy to. Um we are additionally waiting for guidance. I know that this seems to be um the theme these days of conversation, that we're waiting for updated guidance. Um but Associate Commissioner Johnston has been, the weekly meetings that we've been having for special education. Um he is clearly aware of the concerns that have been raised across the state for compensatory claims. Um just to be clear, compensatory claims are when there is a failure, those are the words in the regulations, um when there's a failure on the part of the district. And this is not a failure on the district, this was a pandemic. So um they are very aware of it, um they being kind of the powers that be and how we go forward with it. So I don't think we're going to know yet um what some of our needs are until we get some of the the guidance from the state. Even going back to the conversation um about PPE and social distancing and what it's going to look like, until we get kind of what the plan and the expectation is, planning, um you know, where we're planning for every scenario possible, trying to be mindful um of of needs and cost and um kind of fear. And I I think that, you know, while we we can make statements that we um that there has been regression, some students are actually blossoming under this kind of model. So it's a very strange, you know, what we assume um is working. Um for some students, it's working beautifully, for others, not so much. Um and I think that the staff is feeling the same way. Um we've jumped into remote learning. We weren't um, we're not trained well. I think now we are from where we were a few months ago. Um but we, you know, how, we weren't an online platform, and now we are providing exceptional online services. So um I think that that's just something uh to be aware of. Um Judy and I have talked, central office, and I have spoken. Um and, you know, we're kind of looking at kind of what are the scenarios in front of us? And what do we need to be thinking of and be mindful for and be planning for um as they come up?
But any cost associated with special education uh platforms or anything like that is included in Dr. Evan's distance learning estimate for especially and generally? Okay, Vina, thank you for waiting.
No problem. Um first of all, I want to commend the staff and everybody for the incredible work you're doing, planning with so much uncertainty. Like, it's it's probably making your plans ten times longer than it would if we had more information. So thank you for working under all of these scenarios. I can't even imagine how difficult this time must be. My question is budget-related, even if it doesn't sound like it. I just want you, Judy, to answer budgetary. Is the, is DESI looking at the curriculum um effectiveness? I'm not sure I know what words to use here. But are they looking at this statewide to see how curriculum is being delivered remotely? And coming up with guidelines that could potentially change the way we're even doing distance learning? So I don't remember who mentioned that there's a district that has absolutely no Wi-Fi, so they're delivering packets. I mean, there's going to be so much discrepancy and and variance in in our state. And will that impact us? Does that make sense how I asked it?
Sure. So um I think we are uh well-provisioned in Winchester to have our students continue to make good progress. Um um and and as you say, there are many students, particularly in urban districts, who are really struggling, who have yet to sign on to a a remote learning experience and are going to have packets, if that. Um we've, we've made contact with a hundred percent of our students. And so um we are uh well-aware of who's struggling and um uh who is doing well. And and, you know, the progress reports will come out for all students um with IPs. You know, there's some of the same feedback that um our students get. Now, in terms of state measurement of that, the, actually, on the front page of the DESE website, there's a pretty good guide for um COVID resources. And one of those is prioritized power standards that kind of give districts the sense for um what are the most important state grade-level standards that we should be focusing on? And Jen and our curriculum folks have reviewed those um and double-checked it against the things that we've been focusing on, and our students are, again, well-provisioned. You know, the the reality is for Winchester students on state testing, um our students do extremely well um as measured against their peers across the state. And I just want to remind everyone that Massachusetts students are the highest performing in the nation. So uh they're in good company and do extremely well even compared to um the highest performing students in the in the nation um on our state test. That being said, we're really trying to redefine success. Um and one of the silver linings of that Pam talked about is the ability of teachers to give individual feedback to students and have conversations with them remotely. For some students who are really shy, who won't do it in front of other students or don't feel comfortable, um some of those relationships have revealed strengths that students have that we didn't know about. Um and so in terms of curriculum and in terms of budget, um I think um I think we're well-provisioned to continue to um support student learning against the standards um within our current framework. Jen, is there anything you want to add to any of that?
No, I think that about covers it. One thing that was really great is when we um reviewed the standards that you were speaking of from the DESI. Over the past couple of years, we've been working as a district to prioritize our standards. And um the great thing is that that really aligned. So for our teachers, that's really where their planning had already been and where their work was going. So uh that pre-piece was a pretty comfortable transition.
My other question has to do with um planning during the summer. Do we need to account for any funding um to have teachers come in and staff come in to work with you on planning, especially as more information trickles down from the state? Should we be accounting for teacher time or anything like that?
So Jen can answer that one because she's been planning that effort.
Sure. So we're, you know, we're uh, believe it or not, already uh starting on things, thinking about with that same frame for.